So we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. And we'll do roll call of committee members.
Karen.
Karen Conch here.
Amber Brown here.
Susan Divinckin in here.
Katie Donald here.
Kelly Mackey here.
That's it, okay. And then I'll do the scores. This is our school. May peace dwell here. May the rooms be full of contentment. May love abide here. Love of one another, love of our school, and love of life itself. Let us remember that as many hands build a house, so many hearts build a school. And any audience to address the committee? Can we reach out to Ryan and see if he was coming? I just emailed him. Okay, so seeing done, we will move on to if there is a need of the modification. So I can entertain a motion to approve minutes from September 13. Thank you, Karen.
I can second.
Thank you. Okay. Then we'll go ahead and vote. We'll just start with you, Karen. Amber Brown, aye.
Susan Divinckin, aye.
Kelly Mackey, aye.
And then just noting that we're still teleconferencing during the state of emergency.
It's quite possible this will be the last time.
Oh, okay. Like we won't be able to do Zoom as well. You'll have to be in person.
The members would have to be. We're checking in, but the members, the voting members would have to be in person.
Got it.
But then other people can still Zoom in for.
Oh, that's nice.
Yeah.
Oh, great. Okay. And so then we're moving on to financial reports. That's you, Jim, whenever you're ready.
Okay, so we're working on updating for the opening of school. The first big update is that we're adjusting to the lower ADA about 249. So about enrollment in the range of 265, ADA in the range of 249. So that's, we'll call it $140,000 difference. It would be a little higher, but the rate, revenue rate is higher. So that helped offset some of it. So it's less than 10,000 per normal. We expect about 11,000 per ADA adjustment. That's not, you know, we've discussed, this was probably on the way. So this is the first adjustment at that level. And I would add, especially, you know, some of you see this every week for years. But, you know, these forecasts are projections of where trend is going, trying to keep us updated on that. They're not, they're not final, they're not set, but these are just in the council updated that at this rate, this is where we're, where it looks. So we knocked that revenue from budget down about 140. I think we discussed that at the last meeting, that that was probable. We also noted that the activities, they're under 4 million, but they're moving closer to 4 million. So that'd be in the range of about 160 above budget at that level. Now, the budget does include, when we get to the revenue section, the budget does include a lot of different grants that you might move around. So it's never as easy in these years with multi-year grants as saying, here's where your revenue is going to end, and here's the impact of your expenses. It's more about, you know, this is where revenue has come compared to budget. This is what expenses look like. What are your options relative to grants? You know, how many grants do you want this year? How many grants do you want to save for next year? Taking into account how the trends look at, whether it's ADA and expense trends, or if it's programs that need to be added, things like that. Fortunately, this year is going to take on the whole harmless that was actually from last year. It's going to be recognized this year. So whenever we talk about the surplus, we have to break it into like, what's the current? And then the whole harm element, that's 431 is our calculation. So at the levels as described here, we're getting closer to break even in current activities. About 63,000 at these levels. And then 40, 431 is our expectation for prior year gain. So we always want to see that surplus above 430. We know that's really related to the prior year. And we've discussed leading up to now, every month, cash right now, or two weeks ago, September 30th, still strong at 414,000. But kind of as we talked about last summer and starting this year, as we get into November, December, January, cash looks like it's going to deplete really quickly. There is good news from the state that the new multi-year grants should fund in, partially in November and December. But there's a delay to the school receiving the cash. So we're probably looking at that first cash flow installment. We're probably talking late December, late January, when they say November, December. So that does help. We have included that in the forecast. I think we have a little more time. Look, look at the trend, but it looks highly probable that we're looking at next month either short on cash or extremely low on into December based on, based on the timing of cash receipts. And so I think the council should consider taking another advance, factoring advance on AR, get through this winter. And then as you look at, you know, as long as the budget's near what we've been talking about, as you look at spring, I mean, as the AR comes in, cash stabilizes and you feel much stronger. So this isn't, this isn't a change. This was in the budget model. This has been in the model all along that there was risk in early fall, and then there was risk in early winter. We just had to monitor how the cash flow was going to arrive from the state.
So the comment that really clicked with me this month that I want to make is, you see that date is of CBIDs is October 5th. That's the date that we've set for the ADA change. So really this October meeting is the first time we can really look at where we are this year. So we've, we've watched what's been happening, but now we really have the information to be able to say, yes, we're okay, or we, we have more work to do. So that was a real aha for me this year.
Yeah, and I think it's fortunate, you know, that we're making these model updates. And we're still talking about 431 plus. The surplus, surplus is higher than the whole harmless. So as we move a little further, you can see there's still, it still operates at these levels. You just have to consider how you want the revenue to go. So I don't have the ADA numbers yet, but you can see we were adjusting the model basically down. We're probably looking at an enrollment in the range of 265. The original budget was favorable, you know, with the 265 ADA. There was always consideration that that might not materialize. And so this is taking that into account, but you have a much higher revenue expectation because we're taking on these multi-year grants in this budget. So there's a real difference between 22, 23 at 250 ADA versus a future year at 250 ADA. You might expect 15,000 per ADA at those levels, but this year we're probably talking 17, 18,000 because of the revenue, because of the extra revenue that's available right now. So something we've been saying for a couple of years is that you still have time to work with the budget at what might be a lower ADA than you wanted, because you have extra revenue. But every year we go along, that revenue availability will start to, start to normalize back down towards 15,000. That being LCFF plus all the other grants. So we usually talk about LCFF in the range of 11,000. The availability of all those other grants pushing it up towards 15, and this year potentially 17, 800. This is an attempt. I guess the 17, 800 is because we're including the whole harmless. That truly is a one-time spike, you know, creating that. So we've talked about this 431 influencing this year's budget. So you can see last year, because the whole harmless wasn't recognized, last year benefited from about 500. With the inclusion of the whole harmless, this model is about $1 million in extra funding. So if we strike that, consider that last year, we're still talking about 600,000 in extra funding in this model. If that was what it takes to balance this budget or make this budget palatable, we're looking at a reduction then down to about 250 next year, and then down in the range of 100, 120 going forward. That's still good, but you can see it's a steep change between these years.
So we don't want to spend that $1 million this year, if you know.
Yeah, yeah. So the big number here is, the bottom line is the ESR, you have two years on the federal money. And so that's about, yeah, so that's a little less than 500,000. So you could go 250. If you could go 250 even, that'd be about 100,000 less in this year. We'd pay you more money for next year. So that money is going to go away. We're probably, you're probably going to use the ELO this year based on the programs. And we're already the model, and this is just model, right? The council can decide how to do this. The new multi-years, the arts, music, and instructional, and the learning recovery. I just modeled it at an even distribution of the life of the grant, so that that isn't spiking. The school can benefit from that for every year of the grant. Same thing with educator effectiveness. But to show where we were, we had to bump up the ESR to 364. So if the school was able to operate on 100 less than that, then you have, you know, call it, call it 260 this year, 225 next year, something in that range, you know, close to 250 each year would be kind of an even distribute if you could do that. But the, the, the main, the two revenue stories are we're adjusting down to the 249, so it's going to be less than budget by about 140. And then, you know, how are these funds, pardon me, are these funds going to be? Expenses, we discussed after publication. So a lot of, a lot of the upward payroll will probably result in reduction in consulting services. It's a shift where there's money for services. Silence this. There's a shift payroll consulting services. So you might, but overall, there is an upward pressure from this 3.77, closer to a 3.9 probably in the forecast when I look at it. Maybe some of that shift in staffing versus consulting, maybe there's a little reduction. But, but looking at the trend, unless there's a change, I would expect the school is going to be closer to 3.9 than 3.8.
Okay, well, and how, if I take the increases in expenses and say what grant that should come from, would that help you, help people to see like, this is what we probably, these are the areas we'll probably have to reduce if we don't have this funding continuing?
Yeah, actually, it'll work great too, because then it'll be, I can do a better job on this showing grants you want to recognize.
Yeah, because we've talked about arts and music, for example, to pay for, primarily for our music program, which takes it out of the regular ADA, and then we can save the regular ADA money and continue to roll that if we need to. So, so then people know that's what we're saving on, and when that money goes away, we're about to figure out where that money's going to come from.
Yeah, that'd be great. And then you can, you know, so for instance, arts and music is going to run for four years at this rate. Learning recovery can run for six years at this rate.
Right.
And it would be, you could show, you know, okay, you know, we feel solid for at least two years. You know, maybe four, and then it's going to come to LCFF rates, whatever ADA, LCFF rates, whatever we're looking at in the future. But exactly, I think it'll do a good job of showing why, you know. I think I say, I, I say a lot in these presentations, expenses are up, but we're using grants. Because we went from a model of, you know, single source, not entirely, but almost single source funding. And so you had your expense, but you said, that's it. You know, I've got LCFF, here's my expenses. If I have any variance, it's an issue. But now we expect expenses to move around because you've got four and six-year grants that you might want to use now, that you're entirely entitled. So it's good to be able to tie and say, you know, we expect the expense model to go up because, look, we're recognizing these grants.
Okay. Um, yeah, I think that's a great suggestion. That would be way helpful because if you're not super familiar with how all these grants work, or you're just new coming to them, it's, you know, it looks like we have all this money, and then we're not going to have all this money. And so really helping to outline where it's going to go, what we're using it for, and we might not need some of it in the future. What our ADA actually needs to be to be sustainable, sustainable school, those kind of things. I, it would be helpful, I think, if they were a little bit more black and white. Yeah, because if you're looking at the budget every month, sure, we kind of understand it, but anybody else to come and look at it, you know, that would be helpful, for sure. I think that's a great idea. Yeah.
We've been fortunate to, you know, it's administratively challenging, but it's a good problem to have the addition of these new. You know, we, we ran for a year saying, here's your three rows, and they're, they're going away in two years. And, and, and now we're talking about, you know, I can't see what this is. You know, we're talking about eight rows, probably more of new grants. And so it's, it's made the administration more confusing to explain, but the good news is, is there is more money for multiple years.
So what other grants would we be expecting that we don't have that you were talking about? That would, I, I think you were saying they would hit like November or end of December, where they would fund November, December, but not hit till December, January. What is that?
Yeah, so that's the arts, music, and the learning recovery.
Okay.
So, so they, if, I, I believe basically the state had significant revenue and wanted to award a multi-year grant to the schools. And so the state's going to distribute it all, which is even better news. We will receive the cash upfront as opposed to the federal where we're on a delay based on cost. So we expect half of the total to arrive in late fall and the second half to arrive at the end of the year. But we're always, that's why I was just kind of warning, that would, that'll really help the cash flow concern. But we're probably not seeing it till end of December and then end of January to actually see the cash in Blue Oaks Bank.
But we also have to be careful because we're allocating it over years. So we're not, technically we'll have it.
Not spending it, yeah.
Okay, yeah. So that's why I think it would be good if we, I like how you did it on here. Because I didn't even realize we were getting that. So that's great. So I think it helps us, you know, to visualize where we need to be and what the ADA is actually going to be. What the revenue is actually going to be, and how this is, how we have, because that, those grants have to specifically go to those things too, right? That's the way they're written, like they.
They're pretty, they're, they're actually pretty unrestricted.
Oh, okay.
They're, they're, I believe they'll, they'll probably both require a plan in the end.
Oh.
You don't have a plan yet. But unlike, unlike the other grants, technically they are. But they were written with a like, may, may, maybe a simplified way of saying it would be like, wouldn't it be great if you spent this on arts and music? But it can also be spent in a wide range of instructional activities. Learning recovery will be more specific, but that's already in line with what you're doing. And so similar to some of the expanded learning and, and the ESR money, it's a restricted fund, but you already have activities that you would like to do and that line up with that. And so it's easy to say, oh, well, great, you can use that to fund that program.
Got it, okay.
Oops, go back. So third year in a row, it's going to be weird looking at the surplus because we basically have a prior year adjustment flowing through. It's been very difficult to compare them. So like I said, you always want to see this above 431, because we know 431 was the prior year number. So at these levels as described, we're, we're near 500, so 431 plus 65, 63. And then a note, because when we were designing the budget, we presumed that this was going to be included in 21, 22, so it wasn't stated in the budget. So the 431 is also going to be a budget variance. So this was, the budget originally at the higher ADA was a 186 single-year surplus. But also the school didn't know it was going to receive this 431. So that 431 helps stabilize the historic fund balance for the school all around. So you're having to budget a higher surplus because you didn't know you were going to receive a prior year.
Thank goodness for that.
Yeah. Cash, I left the negative in play in, in this, to show the decline. I didn't, I didn't put a placeholder for an advance, but I just wanted to show how. And you can see in the budget, this, this is in line with the budget. The difference is the school did the factoring and then also had the benefit of the EPA providing cash early in June. So we had kind of a double boost in July to help carry through here. But either way, because so much of the cash is still projected to be outstanding until at least the end of December, if not into January. November, mid-November activities are cash risk. And then without a cash influx, December would be inadequate cash at this level. And then you can see the assumption is, we mentioned the one-time grants, the EPA, different events spiking in January. So it's the, the quarterly seasonal nature of funding that you have this 45-day window where there's not enough cash, and it's all recovered in 10 days. But you have to have available cash to get through that stretch where it's not arriving quarterly. And then noting, part of that is also this, this extra cash that was received through factoring here is being repaid October, November, December. So that's accelerating. The boost to get you through October is depleting now. And so that's where November, December then become more of a stretch too. Then after that time, once the funds are received, the December funds are received in January, then cash looks much more stable for the rest of the year.
So Jim, hopefully, here you say is that we should have a, a factoring contract on the agenda next month in November.
Yeah, I think so. I think we, we continue to review through October. We can, we can reach out to the, the, the factoring parties and review the model and see what the outlook is. And then take action in November.
Did we wind up paying for it?
Yes, we did. Okay.
But we weren't, were able to.
We improved it, and then the next day we heard.
That's right.
Extra money, remember?
Yes, okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, cool. So same process as last time, basically. Yeah.
And it is continuing to strengthen this shortfall in November and December, because even as I talk about being short in November, you're still benefiting from one or two months factored at that time, and then the, the final month being repaid in December. So it's still stretching. I think without that, we would have been needing action now in October.
Yeah.
And hopefully, if it's, it's looking, it's looking to basically bridge until all this cash arrives in January, then you're comfortable. And so it's trying to have a significant enough bridge to not cut it too close. But, you know, we, if we wait a few weeks, hopefully we get better information and more comfortable with the amount.
Do we generally look so far to the future for, say, next school year that we say, okay, we're going to have less funding. Our ADA really needs to be here in order for us to not run into deficit. Do we look that far ahead into the next year? I know sometimes the funding's kind of wonky, and we sometimes don't know what we're going to get, but like just knowing what we're actually going to get, for sure, the extra funding that we have. Do we look that far into the future to make sure?
Yeah, with, with, two things that are really driving it is kind of your July through, let's say, February. July through January, if you look at only the current year activities, forget, forget your historic AR balances, whatever. Your cash flow runs, so this is about a, about a, I'll call it a $4 million budget, just to make it simple. I need simple numbers. It's about a $1 million cash deficit. And that $1 million cat, and then you run, you know, if this is a break-even budget, you run about a $1 million cash deficit. Then you break even, and you're looking at about a million in AR at the end of the year. So insofar as you have AR every year, that, that million AR at the end of the year helps fund as that arrives. That's boosting you through the next year. Now, if we jump back to the, the 431 old harmless, that's part of the equation that last year's budget without that is how big of a loss do you have in a single operating year, right? So, so if you had a break-even year, you would just be basically whatever your beginning balance is, your AR nets out every year. Your cash is just your cash. So as long as you don't have a losing you can look at your model and say, this is how much cash I expect to have at any given time. If you have a gain year, if you're able to, if you're able to bank a surplus year, then you're, you know, building that once you get, once you get that AR collected. So what's kind of throwing the model off is that 431 that really helped last year isn't, we don't believe that's going to start arriving until February of this year. You would typically look at that AR and think, oh, July, August, maybe September. Got a three-month window on my AR, hopefully 60 days, not longer. But we're dealing with multi-year grants and the ADA award that aren't going to happen until the second half of this year. So that's what's escalating this issue, or we know that current year activity is always a deficit for the first half of the year. But how is my, how is my balance I arrived with? And my AR that I would expect to collect by September is getting stretched until February. So if we go through this year, let's say we ended this year at 650, similar number as we came into this year. Only there's no factoring in this number, and there shouldn't be any unusual AR. So if you were to overlay that here, the difference is here when we came in at 600, we had 263 that we had to pay back October, November, December, and a bunch of AR that didn't arrive. So if all the AR plus the 650 arrives in Q1, then this would stabilize, and you have risk in Q2. So it's, the seasonal model is always going to be Q1, Q2 cash decline while you collect the last year. But if you can end with this kind of cash strength and a balanced budget plus a balance plus prior year, then I think you're looking at this model, and we're talking about next year, yeah, you know, Q2 cash declines, but it's steady.
Okay. Great. That was a great explanation. Thank you. That was really helpful.
Thank you. That, ultimately, that's our goal. So I think when, when the school, and that's kind of where the school, the school got there. The school, the school had more cash concerns, built stability. And then the challenges of the last two years, coupled with, we have funding to get you through those, but the cash is, is going to arrive really late. Sort of the model. So, so I would say the school's cash performance is better than this. But there's a distortion in your AR timing where it's like, we're looking at like nine months instead of two months collection. I'll stop there.
That's, yeah, that's great. That's very helpful.
And that's, that's it. Are there any other questions about the September update?
Okay. Um, thank you, Jim. Really appreciate that. Kind of loaded you with the questions today. Um, okay.
So I want to talk a minute in the rest of his presentation, because Ryan's hearing, he's new, and I want to make sure that we all have that. There is, the rest of the presentation is really kind of the detail of the month where it says what precisely we spent money on and where and how. So please, it's often that Jim can't get these to us until right before the meeting, but take a look at those, and even if you have questions for next month, be prepared to ask them because we can do that. The timing of our meetings are such, they're, they're within the first week generally, or right barely the first week of the month. the first week generally, or right barely the first week of the month. And so closing out the month and giving us a report is a tight timeframe and we're really grateful to Jim for what he does. Um but sometimes that gives, doesn't give us a chance to really review the whole presentation. So um think in those terms, if there's something on here this month that you have a question about, feel free to bring it up next month and say, hey, you've had this, this uh, I saw this in the budget pages or something and I wanted to know.
Yeah. So we, we need some of these to the.
Yes, I move that we um we I move that we um refer, or what do we usually say, Alex? I recommend, we recommend approval of uh the financial reports to the charter kids.
Second motion.
Second. Okay, Karen.
Karen, I'm there.
Amber Brown, I.
Susan Devine, give me an eye.
Kate McDonald, I.
Kelly Mackie, I.
Okay, great. Um, moving on to business, approve new parent member.
So, um welcoming Ryan Sanders as he's the treasurer of our parent council. There he is. And um a couple of years ago, we had Frankie, who was the treasurer at that time, start attending and being a member of the finance committee, and that was really helpful and sort of um greasing the wheels of communication between parents and um and the school around finances. So I reached out to Ryan, see if he would be willing to do that, and he said yes. So I am excited um that he is ready to be on, but we do have to formally accept him, so.
So we need a motion.
Yes.
I can move to approve Ryan Sanders joining the finance committee as the parent rep.
I can second that.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Amber Brown, I.
Susan Devine, give me an eye.
Kate McDonald, I.
Kelly Mackie, I.
All right, you're official now, Ryan.
Okay, so now I can unblock my ears and listen. Hey, sorry, I thought I was right on time and looks, uh, looks like I was fifteen minutes late, so, sorry.
Um, I think, Ryan, the only thing you missed is we were talking about this might be the last month that we can zoom in as council members. Correct?
Right, we have to check that. We're on an uh, for Brown Act meeting, it's um it's under an emergency proclamation.
Uh huh.
I'm pretty sure that's running out this month. So um if you're going to be a voting member, you would have to be here for the meeting.
Uh, sorry, uh, okay, let's catch me up a little bit. Am, am I going to be a voting member? Is that what I just got approved for? Oh, okay.
You are a voting member now.
Oh, okay, cool.
Yes, we're in program next. We're figuring it out, but some details to see if things have changed. But that's, we'd have to go back to, we all need to be in the same room or we need to wherever you, if you're not in the room with us, you have to be able to accept public people wherever you are. So that's, you know, you can, you can open your home if that. But that's, those are the old rules that happened before the pandemic, so.
Gotcha.
But we're checking that, so that's why we're just kind of warning people that, you know, we need to be thinking about being together, yeah.
Okay, cool. Thanks for the heads up.
Okay. Um discussion, action on meeting time.
Yeah, this came up over the past month or so as we were, were, and, and are still attempting to recruit more parent members as to whether or not this time um is going to work for parents. And if we change the time, would that um help? So.
Which I think kind of has to play down, knowing that everyone always has to be here.
Right.
Possibly has to be here personally.
Yeah, so that'll be a difference. Um you know, this is one of the, the one committee that's really high on staff, so we tended to say if we can do it earlier, to do it earlier. But also the fact that we haven't really had a full parent representation for since before the fire. Um, so that's um another concern.
Possibly the meeting time is a barrier for some parents being before five. Yeah.
So that's.
Have we had any parents reach out and say, I would love to do this, but the time doesn't work?
Well, it isn't broken.
So here's a, here's a thought to me. I mean, um i- in conversations about this parents, the awareness that we could change the time wasn't there. So I've had a couple of people say, oh, um not that they were like willing to do that, but I wouldn't be able to do that because of the time.
Yeah.
And, and so um the, the thought I had was maybe just to reach out and do some surveying and say, hey, would you be interested if we change the time and what time would work for you, rather than just changing the time and having no change in the membership? So if that sounds like a good plan to you, Alex, I will work on that. And that way we're not just saying, okay, let's try six o'clock. Kate, it's nine, that's.
Well, yeah, I think if we push it, if we do push it much later than we already have, I don't know if I would be able to meet monthly. Just because I have a little one at home who needs me.
Yeah. Yeah, I think um even if it was like five fifteen. So, yeah, I mean, uh, it's not a challenge for me, but I don't work in the afternoon. So um if we have parents that work a traditional schedule and they can't zoom in, also like attending it to, I guess if they can zoom, that's easier, but um it, it hasn't brought up to me. Um, so that's the only reason why I kind of brought it up, if that was something that we could possibly look at. Um I mean, I'm with you, Karen, it's not, don't fix it, but
I mean.
Taking around the idea just in case it overlooks that.
I, I mean, we haven't really had any audience members and I don't know if we can say that's because of the time. And I just think the agenda isn't probably that exciting.
It's the most exciting agenda here, yeah. So um how about we just at least reach out and ask, see if people would be interested, more interested in coming if it's a later time.
And I, yeah, I'm just. I think six is a bit late. I think even like five fifteen, five thirty is probably a little bit. Um, because then I think six starts getting into like dinner time. So like for me, that's more challenging than like five fifteen or five thirty. Not that it should be based strictly on how I feel, but um just, it's just a little bit input. Ryan, did you have any input on this?
Uh, I mean, it's, yeah, just kind of personal anecdote. I, I can, I can make this time just fine, and either way you wiggle it um is also okay with me. I guess if I were free for dinner, that would be good, but it's also once a month and
Yeah.
and I, I can swing that. But I think that you're spot on with just ask, why not?
What about the option of, we want to put out the um notification for the meeting? I assume we can make the option to change it within a certain amount of time.
We, we're expected to have a regular meeting time around it.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we can change it occasionally, but we should have a regular schedule for the year, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Great, we'll move forward. Um, okay.
Sorry, may I ask one more question?
Yes.
It, I, I see on the calendar event anyways, this is almost a two-hour meeting. Is that actually accurate? Do we always need almost two hours?
Hmm, not, not usually. Usually we're maybe we go for an hour and a half. Uh, sometimes even shorter than an hour. So yeah, it's not usually two hours. That's pretty rare, I would say.
Okay, that um, that may be also something that chases folks away. If it's not Zoom, almost two hours and right at dinnertime.
Yeah. Okay, great. Well, glad we discussed it. Um, and no action to take, so we'll move on to Amazon line of credit.
Maggie, do you want to talk about that one? Sure. Um, so we use Amazon for um ordering our school-wide supplies quite a bit and um we have had a line of credit with Amazon for as long as I can remember that we've used Amazon. Um the credit limit is quite high and what we do normally is we pay Amazon each month and we pay the invoices that are due. We're currently about a month ahead of schedule, which is nice. We never have to pay interest on any of these um payments and it's really been a great uh benefit for us to have this line of credit. And recently, we received a notice that as of January twenty twenty-three, Amazon Business Line of Credit was going to be discontinued to all business owners. So that um takes away that option for us. So now if we purchase something on Amazon, it has to be paid for right up front. And that is that's a big deal for a school that's ordering thousands of dollars worth of um supplies and um sometimes our, our bill could get up to ten thousand dollars um or more. We have a fourteen thousand dollar credit limit for summer ordering. Um and there have been times when we've gotten close to have, to being at that limit. So um Susan suggested, and we were thinking about uh getting a credit card with the school. But you know, historically, that has not been a great option. Um, again, you would most likely have to make payments on a credit card and there's always interest. Um, and so we thought we'd bring it here to finance me for discussion and ideas.
So the Amazon line of credit didn't have any APR on it or anything? Or?
No.
Wow, okay. But if we had another credit card and made on-time payments every time, would we have to pay any interest?
We would pay it off. We would have to pay it off every month. So if we spent thirteen thousand, then we just pay it off.
Have to pay it off every month.
Um, it would be easier to budget if we did that. Um, because we would have a balance and we'd just pay it off. And so I don't anticipate that we'd be paying a lot of interest on a credit card. Um, and there's a lot of benefits to having a credit card. Right now, we have um uh just an ATM card. So if we do use the school ATM card, it comes right out of our account right away on that day. Um, that's not always ideal because it's not a plan, you know, usually uh that only happens in emergencies and those purchases are for that purpose. Um and so yeah, so we just kind of wanted to toss about any ideas.
When you brought this to me the other day, I was trying to remember the program. So there actually is a, it's called CAL card, C A L dash card program. Um, and you can Google it if you'd like. It's CAL card is one of the state of California's commercial card service programs available to state and publicly funded local agencies. So it is a, it is basically a credit card that's set up specifically for um government agencies. And that's what I've used at other um entities in the past pretty consistently. Because it has just a few more checks and balances on it than a regular credit card. And then you can't, it is like your credit card for school, that sort of thing. It's, yeah, so that would be probably if we decide we need to do that, um we could look into that system um that's set up for us. Um, and otherwise, we either have to be, you know, writing checks or um using the debit system to pay this off.
Is there any interest on that program?
On this program? Well, it just came to mind, so let me look at it.
If we didn't open up a line of credit, um would we in the finance committee be able to review what's you know, what, what the card is being used for monthly?
Yes, we've got it already, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I was just wondering, yeah.
That's the ACH that you've got, but, because that's how we're using it. But then we, what we would uh put on the agenda is to review this, the credit card statement monthly. And I think that we would also want to establish that there's only one credit card for the school or son. We're not going to do so much. This is the credit card. It's, you look at the statement of the committee once a month.
Ryan, did you have a question?
Yeah, I was wondering if, have, have we looked at um other funding models like revolving lines of credit, you know, essentially replacing um Amazon with like a private lender, just to keep that interest rate low or lower?
Um, we have not for this particular purpose, and I'm not remembering why we didn't do it. Jim, can you answer information on a revolving line of credit for the school? I know we talked about it in other cases.
Yeah, typi- typically, it's just been a challenge to get line of credit for a school. Um, the school model doesn't line up well and kind of as we looked at that model where you could see the deficits and the um potential to run a lost year, banks really frown on a lot of losing years. But I think going back a few years, the challenge was just the market not bearing a, a good option for the school.
Yeah, sure. Um, do you feel like if there were a company that says catered to charter schools for this exact type of need, you know, were there a specific product for us? Would it be appealing versus a credit card?
I mean, I think, I think if the school could get a revolving line of credit, that would be great. We, even, even without
For all sorts of reasons.
For all sorts of reasons in that, in that cash chart, right? Like, now, hopefully not a, not a, trying to avoid a minimum draw. Um, but like if you were, if you weren't a school and you were a more typical for-profit business, um thinking of having access to a line that you had to use once a year or something, um, that'd be highly recommended. And Blue Oak, we, we've tried to look at options. Um, and that, that, basically, the low cost wasn't available. The other option was essentially to take out a long-term loan, which wasn't in the interest of the school. Um, and cash did get quite strong. And now, like I said, we're dealing with the, the timing issue right now. Should be, should be one time. Cash should be good. So hopefully, hopefully there isn't the same stress for a line of credit. But as discussed on the purchasing, the Amazon Business Line was, was very useful. And if there were a a reasonable line of credit option, I think it would be very much in the interest of the school.
Um I know there's probably lots of things that we get from Amazon, but generally, other businesses have line of credit. So have we looked into if there's somewhere else we could be ordering through?
It's easier to have one vendor.
Yeah.
And when you have multiple vendors, you're juggling a lot of W nines, you're juggling a lot of it, it's cumbersome for an ordering department to have a lot of vendors. Um, so that's the only, that's the only reason, really, that's probably not the only, but the main reason why Amazon was so useful is because they offer low-cost um options because they buy a lot of product from multiple vendors and then they can offer those products at a lower price. So even when you do go to that one vendor, it's going to be more costly um oftentimes. So it just, it depends. And it's also a time-consuming thing for one person that manages a lot of different stuff within the school.
So basically, Amazon's a one-stop shop, shop, and it's cheaper. Yeah, that's what you're saying. Okay. Right, right.
We don't pay shipping for our business account.
And they don't, they don't offer any kind of flight, it's like a credit line, or they're taking it away.
The only other thing I can think of is like um a prepaid line of credit. So therefore, we could, we, we could add funds to that once a month or um and then just pay that. You know, just add funds as we need it to, does that make sense? And then we can connect that to Amazon.
I think that starts to get sticky because you still have to have the cash flow, right, to I think that starts to get sticky because you still have to have the cash flow, right, to.
But you still have to, yeah.
So that one would be sticky with some type when we have cash flow issues, I would assume. And then also you've got a bunch of it out. Because you're gonna take the money first before you're actually spending it. So I think it might get a little, yeah.
That would, my concern with that, sorry, is, is that. Again, just like our debit card. Once it's gone, I mean, it goes right to our account. It would be the same thing, like somebody charged something to it. It would be hard to recover. Incorrectly, it would be harder to, harder to recover.
Do we usually?
Go ahead.
No, it's just, this is a.
Yeah.
Do we usually pay it off every month? Or just?
Uh, we do pay off the, the, what ends up happening is. You have a, a group of invoices that are due. Each time you place an order, they put that order towards and they make an invoice for that order.
We pay a invoice.
Yeah, you have groups of invoices. So August invoices are often paid in June. Or July.
It's not gonna be any different with a credit card.
Not really.
Because if you're paying it off monthly, you're really not going to pay an interest rate. Technically, you can budget for a small amount of interest rate. I mean, I see, I don't see where you guys. The amount that you're gonna pay on an interest rate, you're gonna probably wind up saving, going, you know, staying with Amazon as opposed to. Like you said, going to other vendor, possibly spending more money, also time for.
There may also be an option for cash back. So depending on how much you're spending, they do have credit cards that offer cash back.
So that's what I was gonna say. It'd be smart to like maybe just look at our options on credit cards. It's a bummer because interest rates are up right now, but since we're a government agency, I would assume because my. My sister has a government credit card, generally like for travel and stuff because she travels for the government. Generally, they do have lower interest rates. I don't know if they have cash backs, but. You know, that's like you said, also an option because of what we're gonna, depending on what we're spending on, but. I would assume it would be handy to have one if we were just really. Careful and making sure we're paying it off mon- monthly based on what was spent that month, right? You're spending at the end of the month, that's not gonna really move to the next month.
It's a statement value.
Statement, thank you, thank you. I was not getting that. Yeah, that's what I mean. Your statement balance, you pay your statement balance off. You're not gonna be paying interest. Like you were kind of saying, Trevor, so. It, we should at least, I feel like we should explore it. I mean, explore that option. We can even get a line of credit, but I, I would assume that's probably gonna be. Difficult and not.
Well, Ryan has that, actually, that's right. Charter Asset Management, who we also, that's like CAM funding that we use for our. Receivables, that same company just started a program last year. And I forgot about that for revolving lines. So that's definitely one we.
Nice, alright.
Thank you, Ryan.
And then if.
You're welcome.
If we do decide to move forward with this. Would we just be making a recommendation to the board and then they'll also have discussion?
So I guess we'll just maybe. The action plan would to maybe get two or three options. We can look at and then recommend to the board. Yeah.
So if we do the, I don't think the government card allows you to, it charges you if you, a fee rather than an insurance. Or if you're late on your payments. So if we look at a regular credit card that might have cash backs, we look at this and then we look at Charter Asset Management.
Those three different options, see, okay, that's a great, yeah, perfect. Yeah, we definitely need to have something like that, though. What a bummer. Okay, any other questions or input on this? No, okay. Waldorf Professional Development Contract.
Right, Alex, can you post the website page? So I will need an approval on this. My maximum is five thousand and it's just over five thousand, so. Yeah, you have the amount that I can improve without your support. So we've talked about. Professional development for the staff here, students. And our desire this year to focus on behavior work. This gentleman is a Waldorf trainer. Some of the, I brought this up to co-chairs, which is Nick and. And Sarah, they're like, oh yeah, we know him. Didn't he write that book? You know, that sort of thing. So he is not local, but he would zoom in. Kim John Payne is his name. So we could have him attend virtually the faculty. Meetings to talk about. Sort of from a Waldorf perspective, how to deal with children that are struggling. Whether behavior and emotions and help teachers to do that, so. So it would be three sessions. That sort of thing for us to do it in this, but we sort of did that last year with Lindsay with the equity training. That we did.
So this would be inside of a faculty meeting?
Yeah.
What is it? Simplicity Parenting?
Yeah, he's. Pretty well known.
Then he also is available, does, as it says here, some parenting podcast work. So it's not just. For the faculty, but it would include ideas for parents as well. I've been in contact. He's interested. Thursdays would work for him. But I told him I needed to do those with a thorough process, so I haven't made any specific plans yet.
So it says twelve hours of live training. So is that over just for here? Where's that?
Yes.
There's a major controversy around people because like one of the speakers at MTSS. We were like, oh wow. And then, and then we looked them up online and there was just a bunch of controversy. This guy is a quack. So. Sorry.
Something similar to that?
You know, a longtime family consultant, pastor, secretary in education. People seem to like his book. Got good reviews on his book.
What's his book? It's an author?
Is it a parenting book?
I, I like the language behind the book, you know.
So is this just for teachers? Can I ask the questions?
His. That's the way he generally works, but he hasn't told me he won't allow others, which is. Before, I've had him say, no, I only work with faculty. But.
Does it just, I wonder if it would be helpful to have it be more cohesive, because we already have like. We have a counselor, we have Amber. Those are people that are in the classroom trying to help teachers manage behaviors. If they're not in on this discussion. And then the teachers are doing something and then they're telling her to do something different. I just feel like, yeah, that, they have to be included and even maybe some of the aides.
I was not gonna say aides.
The people that are in the classroom have to be on the same page.
They also found the per office.
Yeah, so I mean, it's great that he wants to teach just the teachers, but. That always, that, that information doesn't always filter down to the other people that need it.
So is it a? So keep zooming in? Okay, so I mean. So would all the teachers zoom in separately or would you maybe be able to do it like in a big room?
Generally, we would do it zoom in to the, the great room or to the teachers, I mean.
So I mean, what would?
We could increase the number probably fairly easily.
Yeah, because I would see how that would really affect his time.
Right? I mean, we're a pretty small group of teachers. The absolute classified staff would be under. You know, thirty people anyway.
Is there a limit on how many? Because I would.
Level of discussion, yes, and so that is just in all faculty or individuals.
I really like his overall message and I see how it relates to Waldorf. It says, you know. Simplifying and restoring the slow paced world of childhood back into kids' lives. And he talks about, you know, how. Intense everything is these days, all the choices kids have constantly and he's kind of has this like. Less is more for a family approach. And then I think we need that in our society overall. You know, instead of.
Just twelve hours of live onsite training. So it would be. Like in, like a couple of hours a month or something like that? Is that how it's, or is that not broken down? I'm just curious.
We haven't opened that too.
But it's just you get a total of twelve hours and you guys can figure out based on the program or something, how many, okay. Okay, I mean. I don't find it to be that pricey either.
It doesn't seem to be. I think it's like in Australia or something. Of what I, and I, I like having a series because I feel like the one ons. You, you get some information and maybe or maybe not you apply it, depending on how tired or you are the day you get the training. As opposed to a series where you're studying, you're learning it. You have some time to think about it. You learn some more and implement or try something. And come back to address it further. So that's like, I look for. I'm more likely to, to look for a series of trainings rather than a one off. Especially on something like that where we're really trying, we're not just informing people about something, but we're trying to help. Make change both for families and for, for parents.
Is it targeted to, according to age, grade level? Did you get that far with him? As far as like. You know, elementary school children are so much different than versus middle school kids.
I, I think he covers it all, just much like Lindsay did. We're talking about a more global issue. But there's also time for teachers to work directly with him, so then there could be some, some focusing.
Okay, and then the idea would be to. Sort of integrate it into our. Behavioral strategy.
Right, exactly.
Okay.
Or strength of the behavioral strategies we have.
Right, right.
I think one of the things he says that, you know, that one child that takes all the energy out of the room. You know, how to deal with that and it's.
We have so many teachers that want that.
We have those strategies, but are they, are we strong enough in them? Do we understand what we're doing well enough to really do it well? That's more like, you know, what, what I'm thinking of. We have. Excellent teachers who really work hard to develop their relationship with their kids. And then sometimes. There's a kid we just can't figure out. So hopefully that'll help us with that overall.
In the overview, it says something about Student Social Action Committee. Which I heard talked about at other Waldorf trainings. Where you have upper grade students who are specifically trained on how to foster a healthy social. Culture at our school and then they would be available at like recess or things like that, you know, they can like. Help the mentor, the younger ones and help with the. Conflict res- resolution that may exist out there. So that would be really cool.
That's very much.
That's great then.
Okay, I mean, I like the fact that this series, like you said, it'll be through, throughout. It's not just kind of like you go to. Because it's like, it's nice when you go to those kind of things when it's a conference, we learn a lot of information, but then it's like sometimes overload and then you don't really get to go and apply it. Follow up with questions and so. Sounds good. So if we approve it here, is that it? We just, or does?
It goes to the board.
It goes to the board, okay. Just advise in the board, okay. Any other input or questions for Susan?
I guess I also like that there's parenting enrichment here too. And it's just videos, so I don't know if we can like send the link in the acorn or something. I don't know, but.
Or even suggest the book.
Yeah.
The podcast has really good reviews too and they're short episodes, so. It's just shorter, like nine minutes to twenty three minutes. So that's neat.
What's the podcast called?
The Simplicity Parenting Podcast.
Oh yeah, he's game children play.
See, that's what happens. Okay, does anyone feel comfortable making a motion to. Recommend this to the board?
I can make a motion to recommend. This, I don't know what to call it.
Professional, Waldorf Professional Development.
Professional Development.
Kim, what's his name?
With Kim John Payne. Do I have to say that again?
I will accept your motion.
Thank you.
And wait, when, I, I'll go ahead and second it. And we can go for a vote. Karen.
Karen comes out.
Amber Brown, aye.
Susan DeVignetti, aye.
Kate McDonald, aye. Kelly Mackey, aye.
Ryan, you can vote now.
I can vote now, Ryan, aye.
Was that an aye? Sorry.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Ryan. Okay. And moving on to executive director's report.
Right, often I'm very narrative in these. This time I was not. Okay, so we're continuing to talk about staffing. You know, with the concerns that we're looking at the. At in the budget, I was holding off especially on the admin assistant, the assistant admin, second director, whatever. So we do have a first grade aide. That we're working on hiring and that will fill out complete our eighth positions. We'll move some, Elizabeth will move a couple eights around in order to, that are currently covering first grade that would move into other positions. So excited about that. And then that second admin position is in the budget. But again, I was holding off to some extent till after this meeting to make sure that we could afford it. So I will look at that. I will say however, that. My workload is pretty heavy and am concerned that I, it's not sustainable for a full year, so. We'll continue to look at the budget and see how we can afford it. And if I can see that, then I will bring someone on. Marketing. We have about five thousand dollars left in our contract with. Loan firm, AKA MC2, I changed their name. And. So we're working, we finished, we did some re-ups of the videos, the staff at least has seen that. So we have some pictures of children. Without masks on. Because when it was done, they're all masking everywhere. So. So that seems like a good improvement. And then I've asked them to fo- focus the remainder of our funding on marketing to kindergarten. Kindergarten, when we look at that fourteen that we're down, it's all kindergarten. From expectations to actual. You know. Really, so, so that's a big concern because that's our, our seedlings for the future of the school. The caveat I would put in on that is that we have over the past two years. Seen more children come in in first grade than before, so. So that may not be like, oh no, and oh no, it's just a, let's work on this. So. We are gonna focus that marketing for October and November at least to go around kindergarten. Historically, that's when new families are really, that are thinking ahead, are thinking about where they want with their children. So to get that marketing out now, it's really a support, it will help this year quite possibly. But it's also a support for their, those forward thinking parents that are looking for kindergarten for next year. So that's the work. Then we don't have anything more budgeted for them going forward. So it's a matter of, we have in our budget. The. Parent magazine, we've stayed with that one because they have. School focused issues, so we've kept them going with that. And then to do the Google or Facebook ads going forward with what we have already. And then um to do the Google or Facebook ads going forward with what we have already, so. So that's where we are with the marketing. Um, so the big expense was last year. We can talk about whether we want more support from loan firm and how much we want to spend on that. If you're interested in going that way. Riley's work, Riley, um. As, um, probably Ryan, you don't know this, but Riley um has been working on some projects for us around um extended learning and opening a preschool. So the concern we had right now, we met last week, she's only had two parent responses to the expanded learning survey. So that's not enough data for us to um make a good decision about. Um, whether we not, we're going to continue down that road with that funding. So we're going to be putting out some more um push on filling out that survey. And that's basically, we're just asking, you know, would you use it if we had it? How are you affording, you know, what, what are your concerns or costs? What are you looking for in that? Um, one interesting idea that I hadn't thought of is, um, you know, starting, uh, having some services earlier in the morning. So that families can, you know, we, we have our start time for all grades at seven forty-five. Well, she said some of them are asking for, uh, you know, could we do seven thirty? Could we do seven? Um, so, which is something I hadn't thought of. So, and we are getting a few good ideas, but not enough to make a good quality decision. So, you know, we'll be pushing that more and please, um, if anyone talks to you about it. Um, or wanting childcare in the afternoon, say, hey, should fill out that survey. So that's that. And then um, the last thing, two months ago, we put the certified salary increase. Um, and then held off of it and I'm really grateful we did that. We just got, Chico Unified just um put their schedule online. Earlier this, well, last time I checked, which was a couple, which about a week and a half ago. So that'll, this'll allow us to look at our schedule in relation to Chico Unified's. So, um, haven't had the opportunity to do that yet, so that will be on next month's agenda for that. Also, we have a series of additional things that we pay for, for teachers. Like if they go on a field trip, they get a little extra money. Um, and so I've asked that that be put together and from now on be, be attached in some way to the certificated, the certificated salaries um schedule. So it's out there and everybody's aware of what it is and it's um, it's permanent. I, I know that we proved it like four years ago. We can't find where it is online. So we're needing to go back and, and pull that up and put it in there. And so I've asked that that just be part of our regular um salary schedule, so everybody knows what goes on with that.
So you're referring to like the different stigons?
Yes.
That are possible?
Yeah, like if we get us twenty dollars to go to a home visit, for example, that sort of thing.
Let me make that in one location.
That's.
Just on there.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Um, so marketing, so Kinder, that's surprising to hear that that's where we're low.
Yeah, it was surprising to me too.
So, just if, if we're going to work on marketing to that, um. I'm just noticing like on our webpage, it, it doesn't say that we have the extended program. Which might be helpful to some parents, except for Thursday, we might want to obviously put that caveat in there. Um, and that we do offer an after-school program through CART because um, just, just knowing that as, for some parents, uh, might be nice. That you have the option some days to keep your kids longer if you need to. And our wonderful Kinder schedule's way on the bottom. So, which I think is sort of the best part of kindergarten is what we do. So just as a parent, just like visually looking at it, maybe we could, and then maybe a few more updated pictures or something else on that page. Um, also. The click-through, um, like for Chico Unified, if you go to the elementary schools, like right there, it flashes at you, enrollment now for Kinder. Um, it's kind of really pushed. It's pushed like in December. Um, and then, so just maybe looking at that, if the marketing department, we revamp that section up. Because you're looking at, it's like, it talks about the Kinder program, but it's just, you know, just basically you're reading through it. But it's not as exciting until you start to kind of get down the page. Nutrition is before that. And then, oh, that's the awesome schedule that they have. So you get all the way to the bottom before you get to that. Just visually, maybe if we have the money to work on that and we know that that's sort of getting those Kinder kids in is huge. I see your hand, Ryan.
No problem, I can wait.
And then the other thing with um, starting earlier, like I know for Chico Unified, the earliest that I know of is seven thirty. And then usually the kiddos don't hit the playground till seven forty-five. So usually it's like an indoor option, um, because they don't have probably as many people to be out there. So indoor, you can have breakfast that early and, you know, be there for fifteen minutes. And then you have to hit the playground at like seven forty-five. And then I think even the younger kids can't even go out there till eight, just based on supervision. So just some.
Good ideas, thank you.
Some ideas on that. Um, but yeah, it's, you gotta click through a lot and move around a lot to get to the best parts of our Kinder program. Uh, Ryan, go ahead.
Cool, thank you. Uh, yeah, I, I don't know if this is the time to really dive into marketing or not. But I would love to, at some point, be caught up on like what, what all that um agency is doing and how it's performing. I, I feel like I've never ever seen a Blue Oak ad of any sort, so I would love to know what, what it is they're being paid to do. Oh, um, I feel like being a class parent for a while there, or a class rep for a while, I feel like I heard, uh, I heard a lot of pain around uh, the Thursday half-day. So if that's not part of the marketing of extended, extended education or, you know, did you know stuff like? Just somehow getting Thursdays covered all the way through for, to be a regular school day for parents, probably would get you a lot of engagement there.
And push, because that is part of the extended learning program is to be able to fill, it's a night, day, five days a week. So that's the option of, of childcare. So um, to push that as we, uh, we push out the survey, like, hey, would you like to be able to stay later? Or you have your kids stay later or stay on Thursday afternoons? Fill out the survey?
I mean, even, even like Ryan was saying, just, just until that.
Just Thursday, totally.
About three o'clock even.
Yeah, just make it a regular school day for me.
Most Waldorf parents don't, unless they're, they just have no choice. They don't generally want their kiddos here for nine hours, but, you know, they know they're in a charter school and there's not going to be that, you know, that long day usually unless they're doing through CART. But just that extra till three o'clock, I think is huge. Because I know for Kinder, it's huge when you have that extra time. Just even that one little bit. Right, right, right.
So, I'm getting out of the loop, but does Chico Unified have minimum days?
So they have, um, they have late start, um, but they cover it for parents. So like late start Wednesdays for like Bidwell, I think there's a late start day for high school, like maybe Thursdays. But there's always faculty there for students, so you could still drop off at the same time.
They have a, what's called an ACE's grant. I call it the Schwarzenegger Plan. He put it in, in when he was governor. And so they have that grant for, for basically expanded living already, which we do not have. So, which we probably also wouldn't.
Yeah, and, and I was just trying to put it in perspective that like, there's no other school in Chico that I know of that you can drop off earlier than seven thirty. Yeah, I, I'm not aware of that at all. Um, and then for those late starts, yeah, they usually will cover it at the same time, like you can drop off seven thirty, seven forty-five, maybe even, depending on the school. So, so long as we're like matching what the other schools do, then we stay competitive, I feel like, if we're doing less.
It does make me wonder if a certain number of parents don't go here just because of that minimum day.
Um, I, I know that for sure. I've had, yeah, for sure, Ryan, you're saying that too. I've actually heard that tried to pull over to Blue Oak and that was their, no, was the Thursdays. Which I think you need that development. That's why they do the late starts, actually, Bidwell. They do their morning meetings with all the teachers, so it's important to have that faculty time. But they cover it for the parents. Um, because otherwise you can't drop your kid off, I think it's like nine is when school starts. And they also don't want a bunch of junior high kids just wandering around. Because parents, so I, I do know it's a barrier. I've talked, we've talked about it in sustainable schools. Ryan, prior to you being here, we talked about that um in these meetings specifically about trying to cover those Thursdays not being a bit of a barrier for parents. So, uh, and then just to answer you about the marketing, we talk about that a lot in the charter council meetings. So even if you go back to some that are, if it's on the agenda, um, and you go back and listen to it, we, we talk about the marketing a lot there and where the money goes and things. Because here we generally just slide over it and we slide it into the charter council approval, but we don't talk about it as much. But it is discussed quite a bit in charter council.
Cool.
Primarily we've had Google Ads, is that correct?
I think we have Facebook ones too, right?
Well, we, we're struggling to make fix work because of our website.
We had, yeah, Google Ads. They did a video for us, um, marketing video, um. Which was, we showed, it was showed in charter council. Uh, and I think we took off, sent out, did it get sent out to the parents? Yeah, got sent out to the parents.
I think our biggest focus though this last year was updating the website and getting some better language. Rather than we were very Waldorf-y in our language, um, which doesn't always communicate well to the parent deciding where they want to go to school. So we really did, that was a big part of our work is to say, how do we say we have a great program without using Waldorf language? And they were very helpful in that. So that was kind of our first step. Um, and then the ads went on, right, out primarily on Google. If they went out, where they went out.
I feel like it was only like a couple charter meetings back that we talked about it pretty heavily too.
Oh, cool. Okay, I'll go back and see if I can find him.
Yeah.
The, the only other bits I wanted to mention were, uh, the low response to the survey. Uh, I've found that most people don't read my acorns, so I can imagine most people aren't reading your acorns either. Are you, I, I feel like if you put a, a piece of paper in the backpacks, she's going to get a lot more survey results. So, so maybe go low-tech on that one. Uh, and then lastly, if you don't feel like spending marketing budget on updating your own website, Susan, I've offered this to you before, but like. Uh, I, I have the skill set to do that for you if you would rather not pay for it.
All right, thanks a lot, Ryan.
Yeah, to add to that layering. Because, you know, Acorn, ParaSquare, teachers put it in their newsletters, like that's always helpful, but it's later. Uh, okay, cool. I think we're. I think we're good, right? Um, so next meeting is going to be Tuesday, November eighth at four fifteen. And we're adjourned right in an hour and a half. Yay, all right. Thank you, Ryan. Welcome.
Thanks, everybody. Thanks for having me.